Good evening and welcome to the City of Warrenville City Council Regular Meeting. It is Monday, June 18th. Can we have a roll call, please?
Alderman Ashauer.
Here.
Alderman Berry.
Here.
Alderman Bevire.
Here.
Alderman Davalos.
Here.
Alderman Goodman.
Here.
Alderman Hoffman.
Here.
Alderman Widener.
Here.
Alderman Wilson.
Here.
And the Mayor will not be here this evening. He's taking a little time off. So we have Alderman Goodman.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Alderman Berry as temporary chairman for tonight's meeting in light of the absence of Mayor Brummel.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Do we need a roll call for that? Or just a voice?
Voice is fine.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. If we would all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under one individual with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, and now we'll have a proclamation. Okay. I'd like to invite Lance Hack and Fred Bevire to come on down. We have a proclamation for the 2018 Parade Marshals for the Bruce Brothers Lance and Fred. Whereas both Lance Hack and Fred Bevire were both born and raised in Warrenville. And whereas Lance and Fred began performing as Joliet Jake and Elwood Blues, the Bruce Brothers, as young friends. And whereas over the last 35 years, the Bruce Brothers' performance grew and expanded to include additional characters such as Aretha Franklin, Cab Calloway, and Ray Charles. And they've made over 6,000 worldwide appearances. And whereas they performed halftime shows for the Chicago Bulls Basketball Organization during their championship years. And whereas they have appeared in commercials for the Chicago Bulls, the Chicago Cubs, American Limousine, and traveled to Daytona Beach, Panama City, and South Padre to promote Budweiser, and participated in Budweiser's When to Say When campaign. And whereas the Bruce Brothers have helped many Warrenville residents with fundraising requests. And whereas the theme of the 2018 Independence Day celebration is red, white, and blues. And now therefore I, David L. Brummel, Mayor of the City of Warrenville, proclaim the Bruce Brothers Lance Hack and Fred Bevire as Parade Marshals for the Independence Day Parade on July 3rd, 2018, and call upon all citizens to join in this festive celebration. Congratulations.
Thank you, girl. Thanks.
You're welcome. Thank you.
That was really nice.
And one for both of you.
We should have dressed up tonight.
I know. That's what I said.
Well, thank you very much. Thank you.
And say a few words.
Hope to see you all down there for the show. We're gonna burn the barn down.
Anyway, thanks for recognizing us. We've been doing this for so many years and so many benefit shows all over the country. And Fred and I still remain great friends, so that's a great thing. But anyway, thanks for recognizing us. We appreciate it. Thank you.
We have one person who has signed up, Bob Seibert.
Bob Seibert, Albright Court. We have all been told to learn from our mistakes, but it is just as important to learn from our successes. Mayor Brummel continually states that TIF 1 is the best TIF in the state of Illinois. So what have you, the City Council, learned from TIF 1? First, you should have learned that the taxpayers then were not put at any financial risk. Secondly, the developer only received TIF funds after development occurred and infrastructure was installed by the developer, a motivational tool. However, in TIF 3 and TIF 4, this is not occurring, and the taxpayers are at risk. Why is this point of taxpayer risk so important today? A major new TIF is being planned today just south of Warrenville and will have an economic impact on Warrenville's success or lack of success.
Thank you. Okay, now it's time for the official and staff comments. Clerk?
Rather see this, this is the name, right? The Warrenville and Bloom Program is underway, and if, this is our program to honor residents who have curb appeal in their front yards. So this is the sign that we're putting in your yard. Don't be shy if you think your yard is a good yard, has color, it needs color, and good curb appeal. We will put a sign in, let us know, nominate your neighbor. And we are all over town. We're going to do something new this year and put on Facebook and our Facebook page the Yard of the Week. And then we're also gonna try and do the Business of the Month. So it includes everybody. It's a good time. Thank you.
Thank you. Treasurer?
No report.
Okay. Alderman. Alderman Goodman.
Yeah, I just wanted to give some recognition to some local kids who are wonderful artists. The District 200 Superintendent Art Award winners were just announced, and several of them go to Warrenville schools, so I wanted to acknowledge them. Elena Murray from Bauer, Leah Austin from Hubble, and Madeline Levi from South were all recognized at a public meeting by the District 200 Board. And now it's wonderful to see, you know, local artists starting young, so good luck to them.
Congratulations. Administrator?
I just, was pointed out, there's some kind of a copying error in our packets. It looks like the bills were reproduced twice. We won't be paying them twice, but some of the pages at least got reproduced double in there. If you follow the page numbers, there's duplications, at least in some of the packets. I can see somewhere in mine. Apologize for that error. The bottom line will remain the same. We're only gonna pay the bills once, but in some of the packets, something happened with the copying of it, so apparently it hasn't been a major crisis because only a couple of us noticed it. But just to make sure there's no confusion. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm sorry, I skipped Alderman Davalos.
Thank you. I just want to quickly make a comment. I think this is the venue. I don't usually speak at Plan Commission meetings. I feel this is the, this is the place I should, I should make comments. I have received, and probably most of the people sitting up here, I'm imagining, have received mail these last few weeks from people that are very concerned about the amount of development going on in town. And tonight, we have another project that's on the agenda that is another new development. And I appreciate these emails. I appreciate hearing from citizens, and I appreciate hearing their concerns. They are the same concerns that we have up here and that when I go to Plan Commission meetings, that the commissioners there are discussing. When I talk to staff, staff is discussing things like overcrowding, traffic, stormwater issues, too many kids in the schools, not enough parking, the character of our community and being a kind of lots of green space being destroyed. All those things, I think, are worthy of concern and worthy of discussion. The thing I just want to say quickly is, they are being discussed, and they have always been discussed. We've done strategic planning on all parts of the community, most recently the Southwest District over along Route 59. And we hire consultants often for this, and so all these issues have been talked about when a developer, and I'm sure that the people that are here tonight will know this, when a developer comes to, let's say, the Community Development Department first perhaps, and or Plan Commission, and offers a plan of what they want. Not in all my 30-some years of living in Warrenville have I ever heard either the staff or the Plan Commission or the City Council just say, "Oh, good plan. This is great. Let's do it." I think it's a discussion, and I think everybody rolls up their sleeves, and changes are made, and questions are asked, and it's never quite the same plan that we end up voting on that we started with. And all these concerns that were in the emails these last few weeks are all addressed. We have our own consultants that we hired. We don't, we certainly listen to the development people with their research and their consultants, but we have our own that are protecting our interests. And we all live here, and we all want the best for the community. And most of these projects, by the time they get to this body, City Council, have been gone over, I can't tell you, myriad of times by staff and by Plan Commission. So we are working to make this, the changes that are happening fit this community and answering your questions. I would encourage you to, I hope you're listening now, but to listen either or come to the City Council meetings and come, come to Plan Commission. Actually, this Thursday, I believe, one of those developments is going to be discussed, this Thursday at Plan Commission, the M.I. Holmes Development East Route 59, kind of across from where the Amazon, New Amazon facility is, will be discussed 7:00 PM, right here, this room. And you can see this group in action. They do not roll over and play dead. There are tough questions that are answered and brought up, and the staff always is there bringing their comments. You can read about their comments. You can go to the city website and follow all of this stuff. And I would, the reason I'm talking is, I want you to have the facts. I want you to know what the, what is going on. We're all not gonna agree on everything, even this body up here. We win some, we lose some. But we end up with the staff and the Plan Commission, stakeholders are always usually involved in strategic planning. This group, you know, everybody kind of comes together, and the end result has usually been a pretty good experience, a pretty good choice for our community. So I'm just encouraging you to get involved, keep writing, keep learning, but come and watch how city government works in all of its parts. And if you need to talk to staff, they're always willing to talk to you because we really, we really want the best, and we are discussing the things that you are bringing up. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Attorney.
Thank you. There are two minor corrections on agenda items this evening, and I just wanted to point those out to you in advance. On item 6A, which is the ordinance approving the Vanguard-Cantera Apartments preliminary approvals, on page 5, in the middle of the page, it's section 6A6 entitled "Space Required Between Multifamily Buildings and Parking Areas." There's a correction to letter C to accurately reflect the full north facade. There's two different dimensions. And so that, it currently says 13.6 feet for the north building facade. That should be revised to read 13.6 feet for the drive aisle and 5.0 feet for the loading space along the north building facade. So that just clarifies at one end, it's a little narrower than at the other. And then the other item is on item 6F as in Frank. This is approving the amended and restated Intergovernmental Fueling Agreement with the Forest Preserve. In the first whereas, there's a couple of blanks, so we can give you that information now. And it says whereas, it should be on January 19th, 2015, the City Council adopted Resolution Number, and it's 2909, approving the original intergovernmental agreement. So that would be all I have. Thank you.
Okay. We have, we have those changes? Okay. Thank you. Alderman Widener?
Motion to approve the agenda with the included changes by the attorney for the June 18th, 2018 City Council Regular Meeting.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Widener and a, oh, I'm sorry. Second by Alderman Wilson. Alderman Hoffman, you had a comment?
Yeah, I'd like to take off 6A.
Okay. Is that okay with the motioner?
Yes.
And the second? Okay. Okay. We have a motion. We have a roll call, please? Is it a roll call? No, that's a voice. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. Alderman Widener?
Motion to approve the minutes of the June 4th, 2018 City Council Regular Meeting and to approve the minutes of the June 11th, 2018 Public Works and Infrastructure Committee of the whole regular meeting.
Second.
Okay. Again, we have a motion by Alderman Widener and a second by Alderman Wilson. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes. And now the consent agenda. Okay. B, accept Public Works and Infrastructure Committee recommendation, waive second reading, and pass ordinance O2018-25, amending the city code regarding construction materials for streets and public ways. C, accept Public Works and Infrastructure Committee recommendation, waive second reading, and pass ordinance O2018-26, approving disposal of city-owned surplus property utilizing open-off auction services. D, accept Senior Civil Engineer Hawking's recommendation and pass resolution R2018-24, approving the reduction of the letter of credit for the Batavia Road four-lot subdivision project. E, accept Senior Civil Engineer Hawking's recommendation and pass resolution R2018-25, approving the public improvements associated with Compass School, reduce the cash bond and place it into the two-year maintenance period. F, accept Public Works and Infrastructure Committee recommendation and pass resolution R2018-26, approving the revised intergovernmental agreement with the Forest Preserve District of DuPage County. G, accept Public Works and Infrastructure Committee recommendation, waive competitive bidding requirements, and authorize City Administrator Coakley to execute the Metropolitan Pump quotation for well number 12 in the amount of $22,686. H, accept Public Works and Infrastructure Committee recommendation and endorse the city's snow removal procedures. I, accept Public Works and Infrastructure Committee recommendation and direct staff to coordinate the sewer design and easements with the appropriate property owners and request a change order from Pre-Toronto Construction. J, receive and file minutes for the Bicycleist and Pedestrian Advisory Commission Regular Meeting held on May 8th, 2018. K, receive and file report of invoices paid up to June 13th, 2018, in the amount of $105,845.52. L, authorize expenditures for invoices due on or before July 2nd, 2018, in the amount of $138,040.72. M, receive and file report of debit card expenditures for the month of May 2018, in the amount of $7,218.77. Alderman Widener?
I move to approve the agenda as presented by Temporary Chairwoman Alderman Berry.
Second.
Okay. Now we have a roll call?
Yes. Alderman Hoffman? Voting on the agenda.
Yes.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Bevire?
Aye.
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Okay. Agenda is approved. Or the, the consent?
Yes.
Agenda is approved. Okay, now, back to item A. Alderman Hoffman? Or no, are you?
Can't make the motion.
You cannot make the motion.
If you're gonna vote against it.
If you will vote against it. Okay. Alderman Goodman?
I move to waive the second reading and pass ordinance O2018-22, approving a revised preliminary planned unit development plan and a preliminary plat of subdivision, conditional amendments to the Cantera Development Control Regulations, and Cantera general site plan documents, conditional redesignation of land uses on Cantera Subarea G, and conditional approvals of site-specific amendments to the Cantera Development Control Regulations and other relief for Vanguard-Cantera Apartments, 28248 and 28250, Deale Road.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion, Alderman Hoffman?
Yeah, I'm gonna vote no for this because I believe the ultimate effect of it is gonna be raising the property taxes on the rest of the community. I'm certainly not against development or multiple housing development, but it needs to be done properly and use up good commercial property. It just, it doesn't make any sense. There's only so much property that's gonna be visible by I-88 on Route 59 that that'll be useful for commercial. That'll be, and it just, this here, between the two developments, the one on Ferry Road and the one here on Om-Deale Road, they very well can add 10% of the, to the population, and it's not gonna pay that to the Om-Property Taxes. There's a deficit right off the start. So we're using up good, good commercial property, lessening the restrictions on the Om-Building. They're gonna put residential in there that'll, will be in the debt, paying, ultimately end up having to raise the taxes on the Om-Property Taxes outside of those developments and, you know, for the whole city. It just, it's not right. I'm not gonna vote for it. Plenty of other areas for multiple development. We need to get our property taxes down in order to be able to get commercial developments in town here. They're not gonna pay extra money to be in Warrenville. We're gonna have to match Naperville's property taxes, or we'll just never have commercial development, anything that's large as far as headquarters and things like that, because that comes right off the bottom line, is their profit. Thank you.
Alderman Goodman?
In March of 1998, I took a job at the movie theater. And ever since that month, this particular parcel of land has been a parking lot and a not very often used parking lot, a pretty empty, becoming more dilapidated parking lot. Characterizing it as good commercial property that we're putting to waste instead of an empty parking lot that we're putting to use for the first time since long before March of 1998 is incorrect. So I beg to disagree. I think this is gonna be a good project. Thank you.
Alderman Davalos?
Yeah, I agree with Alderman Goodman. I also think that I'm voting, well, I know I'm voting yes, because I think development like this, residential development, is actually gonna help keep our taxes low so that we don't have to raise our rates. And also, the thing that I just keep coming back to so often, our property taxes are not our only taxes. In fact, I'm not even sure they're half our taxes. The business community is over the moon about this development because they want, they need people coming to their businesses. Other businesses in town are excited. That's, those people I feel I represent also. And people, I've gotten emails from a lot of people saying, "We wanna spend our money in Warrenville. We want more places to spend our money in Warrenville. We don't wanna go to Naperville." Well, this is how you do it. You have, you get more feet on the ground, you get more people walking around, eating, buying things, visiting the businesses. This is how it all works. And so they also buy all this stuff. And how do, I mean, there's shared income tax, there's sales tax, there's amusement tax, there's utility kinds of taxes, there's sales taxes, there's gas taxes. This is how, our city is so diverse in its tax base that this will definitely help that. Number two, and why I agree with Alderman Goodman, is that big piece of asphalt out there is not very environmentally friendly. This new development will have more, will have green space. Yes, it will have a garage and an apartment complex, but they are generating green space out there, which we need. And so that's another reason. And we cannot continue to believe this myth that a whole bunch of big office buildings and companies are gonna come scrambling to Cantera. We have so much empty office building space, as other communities do. It's not just us. It's the way economic development is going. And so it may have been okay when Cantera first came that we thought it would be all office-based, but that just isn't the reality. So if we're waiting for that boat to come into the harbor, it just isn't ever gonna come in. And so I think this is a really good kind of a development. I think it's in a good location. I think the business community is gonna benefit. I think people, there's just a whole lot of things that are gonna benefit. So I definitely am in favor of this community, or this, this development.
Thank you. Okay. We have a motion and a second. We're gonna have a roll call, please?
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Bevire?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Alderman Hoffman?
No.
Motion passes. Okay, on to the regular agenda. I have, somebody bring that forward? Alderman Goodman?
I'd like to make a motion to waive second reading and pass ordinance O2018-27 for prevailing wages for 2018 in accordance with statutory requirements.
Second.
We have a motion and a second and discussion? Okay, seeing none, we have another roll call?
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Hoffman?
Aye.
Alderman Bavir?
Aye.
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. We have no unfinished business. We have no new business, no closed session, and we just need one more motion. Alderman Goodman?
I move to adjourn.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes, and we are adjourned. Thank you very much.